All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business, draw near.
Top of the morning to you, and you may have a seat. I've asked you to have a seat at this particular time, and let me ask, including commission commissioners, please ma'am, please check your cell phones so that we don't have them ringing during these proceedings because silence is commanded, that we not be disturbed by our cell phones. So we want to make sure that we are there with that. This morning, we are privileged again, once again, to have in our presence the Grand Marshal and his court and my favorite bishop is here with us again. But first of all, we're going to have Father Michael Kavanaugh to come before us to lead us in our invocation, our inspiration. And when he gets through with his inspiration and gets to the invocation, I'm going to ask everybody to re-stan as we go into prayer and fall into prayer. We're going to ask Commissioner Nor that he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All right, Father Kavanaugh, we're so glad to have you here. He's the pastor of St. Peter's, Apostle Parents in Savannah.
Thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome.
I'd like to begin with a passage from the Gospel of St. Matthew. Then the mother of the sons of Zebedee approached him with her sons and did him homage, wishing to ask something from him. He said to her, what do you wish? She answered him, command that these two sons of mine sit, one at your right and the other at your left in your kingdom. Jesus said in reply, you do not know what you are asking. Can you drink the cup that I am going to drink? They said to him, we can. He replied, my cup you will indeed drink, but to sit at my right and at my left is not mine to give, but it is for those for whom it has been prepared by my father. When the other ten heard this, they became indignant at the two brothers. But Jesus summoned them and said, you know that the rulers of the Gentiles lorded over them, and the great ones make their authority over them felt, but it shall not be so among you. Rather, whoever wishes to be great among you shall be your servant. Whoever wishes to be first among you shall be your slave. Just so, the Son of Man did not come to be served, but to serve and to give his life as a ransom for many. Our church teaches that the exercise of authority is meant to give an outward expression to adjust hierarchy of values in order to facilitate the exercise of freedom and responsibility by all. Those in authority should practice distributive justice wisely. All of us at various times in our lives have some kind of authority. Parents have authority over their children, teachers over their students. Military officers have authority in those under their command. Police officers have authority in enforcing laws and protecting public safety. And business owners have authority over their employees. County commissioners have a great deal of authority. I looked up the charter. You have authority over roads, bridges, and ferries. I don't know that we've ever had a ferry in Chatham County, at least not in my memory. You oversee finances, you support the poor, you regulate the county police, you promote health and regulate pedaling. And I don't think that's referring to bicycles. But of all the things this commission has authority, but all of the things this commission has authority over impact people's lives. The Greek philosopher Aristotle once compared politicians to craftsmen. Politicians, he says, are to produce, operate, and maintain a legal system according to the universal principles and practice for the good of all. Today, we call those universal principles the cardinal virtues, prudence, justice, temperance, and fortitude. Justice appears on the seal of the state of Georgia and Chatham County. If I'm living the virtue of justice, I'm giving my fellow men and women what I must give them and what I owe them as human beings created in the image and likeness of God. Everyone, every human, regardless of race, religion, nationality, or legal status, has the right to the social conditions which allow people either as groups or individuals to reach their fulfillment more fully and easily. Every human from conception to natural death has the right to life, bodily integrity, and the conditions necessary for a decent life, such as food, shelter, and healthcare. Elected officials have the duty to use their authority that they have been given to promote the common good through the decisions they make on our behalf. And I pray that God will guide you in all the work you do to build up the kingdom of God here in Chatham County. Let us pray.
May we stand.
O Lord, open our eyes that we may see the needs of others. Open our ears that they may hear, that we may hear their cries. Open our hearts so that they may not be without succor. Let us not be afraid to defend the weak because of the anger of the strong, nor be afraid to defend the poor because of the anger of the rich. Show us where love, hope, and faith are needed, and use us to bring them to those places. And so open our eyes and our ears that we may this day and always be able to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Nor.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Father Kavanaugh, we cannot pay you for coming to us and giving us your words of inspiration and for praying for us, that we use our wits, use our God-given talent and wisdom and knowledge, but most of all, understanding and caring. But we thank you for taking time out of your schedule and coming today and for giving us those words with our appreciation. Roll call.
Chesray Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three, Vice Chairman.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two, Chairman Pro Tem.
Present.
Anthony Way Noah, District One.
Present.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Aaron Whiteley, District Six.
Here.
Dean Kickleider, District Seven.
Here.
Marsha Buford, District Eight.
Here.
All right, let me call on Commissioner Milton now as she gets ready to introduce. Introduce our youth commissioner.
We're excited to have this Chase Smalls here today with us. She is a senior at Allen's High School, and she is an enthusiast on science. She wants to be a veterinarian when she finishes her education, but she's all ready to go. Anything you'd like to say to us today? We want to invite you to listen in and ask questions and go along with whatever we've got going on. If anything sparks you, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. It was so good for us to have you in our presence, to take part in these proceedings. And you're invited to participate. Just raise your hand, and if I miss you, all right, because sometimes I'm distracted, somebody will see you and will get my attention that you want to speak, okay, only next Sunday. All right? We move on to proclamation and special presentation. And with us today is the 2025 St. Patrick's Day proclamation and after and St. Patrick's Day celebration and introducing our parade grand marshal, James J. Burke III. All right, and I'm going to ask him if you will come up to the podium. And then from after you get through, I'm coming down, all right? And then we'll let you go through the rest of them who are here with you. We are so grateful that you are here today. The County of Chatham, Georgia proclamation. Whereas one of the highest honors to be bestowed upon an Irish Catholic in Chatham County is to be elected Grand Marshal of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Today, we salute with great pride the 2025 Grand Marshal, James G. J. Burke III. And whereas J. is a direct descendant of the Burke clan, all right? We are so grateful that you're here. Whereas his commitment to service in the Irish community, J. has held every elected position on the St. Patrick's Day Committee Board and served two years as Advent, two years of Vice Chair, and two of the General Chair. Now therefore, I, Chesray Ellis, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 14, 2025, as Grand Marshal J. G. J. Blake Burke, I'm sorry, the second day, in Chatham County, and salute him for having this prestigious title bestowed upon him and feeling assured that the Irish eyes will be smiling as he leads the 201st St. Patrick's Day Parade. And witness whereof, I here to set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia, to be affixed as fourteenth day of March 2025. And I'm going to come down and give you the county's. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman Ellis. Thank you all, county commissioners. As a lifetime resident of the Chatham County, I'm very honored and blessed to be here today and so grateful to lead the 201st St. Patrick's Day Parade through the streets of Savannah and where we honor St. Patrick and everything he's done for our community and our Christian faith. I'd like to take a moment and introduce you, someone who's been and supported me through my life. And first, I'd like to introduce Father O'Brien, one of my chaplains. Bobby Edgerly, lifetime resident of Tabby and lifetime friend of mine. Ron Weber, when I was the chairman, he was my academic for the parade. I got Jim Welch, lifetime friend, graduate from Benedictine with me. Dee Herb, Blood Sacrament and Benedictine together, lifetime friend. Leo Sheen, another lifetime friend. So all pretty much born or been raised in Savannah and Chatham County. So well represented by these gentlemen. Just wanted to thank you all for the recognition and look forward to seeing you all in this year's parade. And Aaron Garber, I'll thank you all very much. And Aaron Gerber, thank you all very much.
All right. Now, is there somebody else in that I know, Mahoney, you gonna speak? Come on. I knew.
Y'all don't want me to speak.
Well, you up there now.
Now, thank you Chairman A. Ellis for having us as always, Tim Mahoney with the Saint Patrick's Day Parade Committee. Want to thank all the Commissioners and everybody involved, what you do for Chatham County. We greatly appreciate it. But I just want to quickly, obviously, congratulations to Jay. He's done a great job and well deserved. I just wanted to introduce a couple of our executive committee members that are here with us today. I couldn't be up here right now. We couldn't put this parade on the street without the hard work and their dedication, their support, and their significant others putting up with it. But I've got my Vice Chairman, Patrick Beatty. Our Treasurer, George Beckett. Our Legal Counsel, Mr. Chris Steinmetz. Keith Parker. Robbie McGrath. But these guys, these guys make it happen and Monday's going to be a great day as far as the weather and the parade. Thank you all for everything you do.
All right. Let me, let me do this now. I got you. I'm coming. But let me see now, is there any Commissioner who want to make any comments or anything? No, any Commissioner? All right, Commissioner Farrell?
Well, it's always a highlight of the year to have the Parade Committee, my fellow members, to join us at this body before the parade. It's always good to see y'all. Remember, we're downtown and we're always looking out for everybody in the community up here and we appreciate what y'all are doing and the wonderful parade that it takes a committee of, what are we at, seven, eight hundred now?
Eight hundred and seven, I believe.
Eight hundred and seven to put on this parade, and that's why it's the biggest and the best parade in America. So thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, now, my photographer is, she's itching because she thought I'd forgotten, but I hadn't forgotten. Jay, would you come back up and you want him to surround himself? You want me to come back down? Okay. Oh, you on the front row. Yeah, y'all come on. And you stay in the middle now, don't try and even there. Some of y'all come on this side. Come on. Oh, okay. We can put this on this side. I got you. I got you. I get to stand next to my little friend. All right, thank you.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Joe, how you doing?
Really good.
You a herd? Oh, with Denny's dad. So I say half rug with your dad. I didn't say half rug with you.
That's my half rug finger right there. Catching a half rug off your ears.
I just wanted to make sure because I know when they say hurry, I said, one is he one, okay? Because I thought it was just a four or five.
Well, Denny Leonard and Joe. Yes, sir.
Okay. I was thinking where the other one was coming. Tell me the Denny Herb story. Tell him Denny Herb had the curve. He had a half rug curve. Okay, now, good seeing you.
Take care now. Thank you.
All right, we didn't have any Chairman items or no Commissioner items. We had an item that will, for those of you who came to speak on this particular rezoning item, it will stay on the table. And so at this time, I'm going to let Commissioner Kickleiter use a point of personal privilege and he's going to make a statement as to his thoughts and ideas. Commissioner Kickleiter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, I want to just address the petitioners right now as well as the concerned neighbors and all in the area. Up until yesterday, I thought we had this situation resolved totally. But issue was, came up that we need to resolve before we can move forward. We're at a point now, thankfully, the petitioners have been beyond gracious at bending to every need from the concerned neighbors there and but what, what came to my attention yesterday was the problem that's already exists at the intersection of Silk Hope Road and Derrick N. Road, where we already have eighteen-wheelers, tractor-trailers, and all trying to U-turn. And I even saw a video of one where they actually just go off the road onto an entirely different road and circle back. So the potential for some type of disaster if we allow at this moment, an operation to go in with a substantial amount of trucks that would be in and out of the ports, it could cause serious traffic problems. So what we would like to do in an effort to be totally fair, because this has been dragging along and dragging along and as my fellow Commissioner here pointed out in the past pre-agenda session, we hate, absolutely hate dragging this thing along for you, the petitioners, because you've invested a lot of money. And but we have a dual role here and that's to protect you and any help you, assist you to get, maximize your value of your property and everything as your representatives, but also we have to represent the constituents in the area to the best of our ability also. From our talks earlier, we believe we've come up with something that will do that for both. It'll protect the business owners, property owners, as well as all the neighbors and the people traveling up and down Highway seventeen. So as discussed before, there's three issues that I believe the petitioner has agreed to, which I'll go ahead and read this just into the record. When approved in the future, because this will stay on the table, and the reason we're leaving it on the table is if it were denied, it would be six months before you could come back with this and you would have to pay the fees again, and we do not want to do that to you. You've made a sincere gracious effort to do everything we've asked, so. But when it comes back, the following conditions need to be met. The first three I'll read here, the petitioner's already well aware of. One, the subject property shall be buffered from Silk Hope Road. The required buffer shall include an eight-foot-high foot solid fence or wall. The fence shall include masonry columns thirty feet on center. The area between the fence and property line parallel with Silk Hope Road shall include vegetative screening as approved by the county arborist designed to obscure the fence or wall. The next point is access to the site shall only be from State Route twenty-five slash Ogici Road. Developers shall obtain an encroachment permit from the Georgia Department of Transportation for a new driveway access point on State Route twenty-five Ogici Road. The third would be, there shall be no access to the site from Silk Hope Road. Developer shall record a five-foot non-access easement along the rear of the property to prevent a future driveway from being constructed onto Silk Hope Road. The one that came up is the one I stated earlier. Before I could recommend that this be approved in an effort to protect all of the citizens as well as the people who will be driving the trucks on Highway seventeen, it'll have to be contingent upon y'all receiving some type of fix from GDOT or something from GDOT that will stop eighteen-wheelers from doing a U-turn at the intersection of Silk Hope Road and Derrick N. Road. When those issues are resolved, I believe it can fly through and then we have a nice marriage between doing what's right for the business owners and as well as all of the neighboring people in the neighborhood and all of the people traveling up and down seventeen. We've got to protect everyone's safety first and foremost, and then after that, move forward. So sorry, I was excited when I thought we reached the agreement and contacted one of you and told you I thought we had it, and we did. But this came up, like I said yesterday, so we're going to leave it on the table for now and just get started as fast as possible with GDOT to see, basically, and we will work with you on this to try to obtain either a fix to that intersection or some type of signage that will not allow eighteen-wheelers to turn left there. And someone even brought up another idea about a narrow lane that would, would basically would not allow an eighteen-wheeler to take that left right there. So sorry, all of you and the neighbors, we're not going to have any talking about it today. We're leaving it on the table until it's resolved or until the petitioners tells us to take a hike, so. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, sir. Let us move on now to items for individual action. Vote on the following board appointments. Appoint Anthony Charlo to the Aging Service Advisory Board. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Properly motion is second, and I hope I'm pronouncing it right.
Mr. Chiarello.
Chiarello. Okay, I'm gonna let you say it. I'm not gonna stop. To the Aging Services Board, is any unreadiness? Are all in favor, please cast your votes. All right, thank you. Appoint Faith Mahoney to the Department of Family and Children's Services. Is there a motion? All right, motion. There's a second. To appoint Faith Mahoney, and I hope I'm saying your name correctly. That's correct. Okay. To the Department of Family and Children's Services. Are there unreadiness? Please cast your votes. All right. To request bold approval of the following budget amendments and transfers in the Confiscated Revenue Fund, appropriate fund balance, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to increase the C and T operational budget in the restructured Court Fee Fund, appropriate fund balance, two million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to increase the Chatham County Police Building Account. Three, in the Capital Improvement Program Fund, A, transfer one hundred thousand dollars from contingency to establish a hold on. Subject Elimination Project. All right, B, transfer two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars from the SSD Vehicle Replacement Project to transfer out one hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars to the Curbside Pickup Fund and transfer out seventeen thousand, forty-eight dollars to the Solid Waste Fund. C, transfer forty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars from the General Fund Vehicle Replacement Project to transfer out to the Building Safety Fund. Four, in the Solid Waste Fund, increase transfers in from Capital Improvement Program Fund, seventeen thousand, forty-eight dollars to increase solid waste recycling center vehicles. Five, in the Curbside Pickup Fund, increase transfers in from Capital Improvement Project Program Fund, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars to increase curbside pickup vehicles. Six, in the Building Safety Fund, increase transfers in from the Capital Improvement Program Fund, forty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars to increase building safety vehicles. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the item as read.
Second.
Properly motion is second, that the approval be granted. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right. Action calendar, may I have a motion to accept the action calendar in its entirety?
Second.
Properly motion is second, that the action calendar be accepted in its entirety. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right, thank you. There are no first readers, there are no second readers. Mr. Manager, we come to you for information.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed in pre-meeting, in front of you, you will have an update from the Task Commissioner's Office on courses that they are putting on for the public. We also have some information from our resilience program on a program that NASA's putting on to look at global warming and recognizing Dr. Bliss from our engineering department who has received recognition of the Georgia Flood Plane Manager of the Year, and that's all of my updates, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Milton has announcement?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to announce that we have got the results of the study for the US Highway seventeen and SR twenty-five corridor study results from GDOT, and there will be a meeting to be held on March twenty-seventh. That's a Thursday afternoon from four to seven, where we will entertain the residents in that area to give them information about what the study concluded for seventeen. So that will include the people from Derrick's Landing, Cottonville, all the way down. And that will be held at the Botanical Gardens to Cambridge Road from four to seven next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to advise everyone that tomorrow at ten o'clock on, at the Burnset Island Park on Burnset Island, the county has gone under a massive effort to replace the tennis courts and the new fencing. And tomorrow, along with Parks and Rec and the Savannah Tree Foundation, we'll be planting some new trees in the park and kind of dedicating that area, and there's more to come. But if you want to come out and you live on Burnset Island, or if you live anywhere, I welcome you.
And that's at ten?
At ten o'clock, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, there is a need for us to have an executive session for land acquisition, appointments, and litigation. All right, so may I have a motion to recess to executive session? Properly motion is second, that we recess into executive session. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Cast your votes. All right, we recess. Do we be directed?